I had a nice tip from my mom. And you were just a sister of both of our teachers.
Yeah. So, yeah, I guess it's only history one.
There's only yes, yes.
So, I enjoyed it, so tell her I wish for a good job.
Hi, everyone. Okay. Thank you, and now we'd like to hear from our student representative.
Hello, everyone. So, for our students, this week has been Digital Citizenship Week. Every day, a video has been sent out to our students' emails where our schoolmates describe what a certain aspect of digital citizenship means to them. For example, the word of today was responsible and yesterday was respectful. In Student Council, we've been working on our Green Week, which will be the first week in March, to raise our classmates' awareness on environmental issues. We will also be working towards the goal of raising money to donate towards Australia, which we all know has been recently hit with both fires and floods. So, in order to reach that goal, we'll be making posters, setting up info tables, and working towards a Jar Wars type of fundraiser. On February 25th, we will also be meeting with RIT's P2I Program, also known as the Pollution Prevention Institute, so we can gain insight and ideas on what we can do to make our school more environmentally friendly. And we are also preparing to send members of Student Council to a leadership conference at Geneseo on March 17th. And that concludes the student report.
Great, thank you very much. And this brings us to our public forum. At this portion of the public forum, this is for any items that are not on our agenda. We ask the speakers, please limit their speaking to three minutes. If you would like, if you would like to speak on any topic during the meeting, please wait for the presenter to end the presentation, then the board will ask their questions. When the board is finished, the audience may come up to the table and ask more questions.
Okay.
Phyllis?
Yep. Good evening. Phyllis Wickerham, I represent Senator Patrick Gallivan. This is the first time, I think, Jennifer, that I've been here as with you as president. I just come to the board meetings within the senator's district to let you know that he is interested in the things that are going on in the district. We've had conversations about some of the projects that the school district would like to do, the senator is aware of those. We've had meetings this past weekend with Monroe County School Boards Association, so we did have our conversations about the budget and what to anticipate. The senator is very aware of your concerns, and I just wanted to make sure that you understood that when you have things that you would like us to know, you have, you can contact me. Karen has my contact information, as well as the superintendent, and I am happy to answer questions or do some fact-finding for things that you might not be aware of. I am learning about the Ed 2D issue, and the senator, it was a new issue for us, so I'm doing my homework on it, so hopefully when we find out what some of the more practical answers are for you, we will make sure you get back and get back in touch with you. So, thank you very much, and I am not going to stay because it looks like you have a very large agenda tonight.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Ellie Sherman?
Hi, my name is Ellie Sherman. Hi, my name's Ellie Sherman, and I'm in third grade at Winslow School. I'm here to speak for my brother Noah and my sister Suzie. My brother's in seventh grade and my sister is in fifth grade. We really like our teachers, and we don't want them to stop teaching us. Here are some facts about how important our teachers are to us. First, my sister's teacher, Mr. Watts, is kind, caring, and funny. He helps the class by making learning fun. Second, my brother's teacher, Mrs. Cresswell, is fun and hilarious. Her class is the highlight of his day. Last, my teacher, Mrs. Hunter, is very positive, energetic, and kind. She prepares many fun activities for the class. The Sherman kids support our teachers, and we ask the Board of Education to give them a good contract. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Okay. Anyone else? Seeing no one, that'll close the public forum tonight. We'd like to move on to the remaining agenda items. Item number eight, Items of Routine Matter. This consists of items A through G. I will accept a motion to approve these items. Moved by Nikki, seconded by Diane. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed, nay. It is approved. Next, we'll move on to the Personnel Actions. I will accept a motion to approve the Personnel Actions. Moved by Nikki, seconded by Anne Marie. Any discussions on the Personnel Actions? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Opposed, nay. It is approved. Item 10 is an MOA with the Administrators Association of Rushehrieta. I will accept a motion to approve these. Moved by James, seconded by Doug. Any discussions on the Personnel Actions? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, nay. This is approved, and this brings us to our follow-up Good Shepherd Report.
As the gentlemen are getting themselves situated, I just want to take the opportunity to frame the conversation. Andy Whitmore is ill today and wasn't able to be here, so thank you to Dave and Ken and our friends from Lobella for being willing to lead the conversation. In January, we presented you with four options for utilization for the Good Shepherd property. Outside of those options, we recommended an option that would hopefully give the community what was most important to them, as evidenced by what came through in the thought exchange, and the idea being that we would be able to offer these things at no additional cost to taxpayers. A decision does not have to be made on the way that we utilize the Good Shepherd property tonight, but in order to get a proposition on in May, we would need to get a decision from the board by the end of the month. So, tonight is really about giving you sort of a refresher on what these options look like, going through on some level the costs, giving you an opportunity to ask questions, and I guess, you know, what we really need to know tonight is if you're going to want an additional workshop on the 25th before making your decision. So, at this point, I'm going to turn things over to the team here, and they'll walk you through the options.
As I mentioned, we have the same information, and to start with, everybody assumed members, Joe Curry.
Hi.
Director of Council, Architect from Lobella. And Ken Nelson, I'm David K. So, the sheet I gave you is a refresher of what we had. The option one was to renovate the Good Shepherd School. It had a, that included the road, the Good Shepherd Sports Field, renovating the Good Shepherd School. Excuse me, it was a seven, that was supposed to be an and, and the auditorium, and the Spirit Sports Field. That one was total of 24 million and a tax impact of $54 per year. Option two was to demo the Good Shepherd School and move pre-K to Webster. And then it also included the road, the Good Shepherd Sports Field, renovating the Good Shepherd Auditorium, and Webster, and then the Spirit Sports Fields, and that had a total impact of 15.7 million and $27 a year. And option three was to demo the Good Shepherd School and build a new pre-K building, and that also included the road, the Good Shepherd Sports Field, new pre-K building, and renovating the Good Shepherd Auditorium, the Spirit Sports Field, also, that was total of 29 million, the tax impact of 78 million, excuse me, $78 per year. Then the option four was to demo the Good Shepherd School and build an alternative high school, and again, very similar things, the road, Good Shepherd Sports Field, a new alternative high school, renovate the Good Shepherd Auditorium, a little bit of work at Webster, and Spirit Sports Fields, and that was a total of 34.4 million with a tax impact of $100 a year. And then, we kind of brought to you the Phase One, kind of stepping into this over multiple years, which would be the road, the Good Shepherd Sports Field, renovating the Good Shepherd Auditorium, and some Spirit Sports Fields, and that came in at eight and a half million, and had a zero impact. And that's kind of where we left it last time. I do have all of the sheets behind here, so if we want to flip to a sheet, if you have questions, and we want to discuss, you know, again, everything had variations on it, so we can plug and play, you know. You know, if we liked one road better than the other connector road, we can plug and play that. You know, if there's other pieces we want to pull out and put something else in, you know, we have, we have costs for that. They didn't know how you wanted to proceed, if you just wanted to have an open discussion and ask questions, start off with.
Do you have any questions?
You answered one of them for me, it was the roads, the access roads, there were different variations, and like some were just a plain straight road, you know, that I like the bus with the, and one of them that.
Yeah, the one had, you could park the visitor buses right by the Spirit Connector, and that's awesome, that's one of my favorites. You know, and not, you know, I don't think any of the roads have, you know, a giant swing one way or another. Dollar-wise, it's just different layouts.
Any other questions?
I know that the, it was discussed last time, that the state prefers as few entry and egress points onto the state route as possible, and in some, if not all, of these plans involve reducing the number of those access points from two to one. Okay, is there going to be, would there be a traffic light at that?
Yeah, so the traffic light, we have to send a study to the state, it's something that we will request a traffic light. They will say, give us a study, and we'll go back and do a traffic analysis study, something that Lobella does, and then that'll be presented to the state, and they will come back to us with a decision. You know, the early discussions, was it, was it was going to be much more possible to get a traffic light on Rushehrieta than it would be on Lehigh?
Sure.
So, I think, we agree, the civil, civils, I mean, kind of, they're friendly to the possibility of a traffic light.
Oh, yeah, yeah, they, it was really just, it would be studied whether it's needed or not, and they had no objection to the proposal.
And we have funding in for the traffic light, which they do allow us to have a traffic light, and the burden is asked to pay for it.
But they maintain it, wouldn't you point it out?
Once they maintain it, once we install it, it's theirs.
So, I just, I just want to add, the option that we're recommending, given that the costs that you see, the idea was to include an option, recognizing that this is probably going to be a five-to-seven-year development of this site, but to get started in sort of a Phase One approach, that would allow us to get the features that the community has said through conversation and through the thought exchange was most important to them. One being the access road to alleviate traffic before and after school, and also to allow better access to the high school fields during sporting events. The other being the renovation of the church, so that we could utilize that space for professional development purposes, and also as a, as a smaller performing arts venue. And then, as you'll remember, we were directed by the board to have the athletic director form an advisory group over the summer. It was a group made up of, of coaches who made recommendations to us regarding the utilization of the senior high school athletic fields. So, this option gives us a turf field, which is needed because of athletic events during the shoulder seasons, it becomes really difficult at the end of the fall season for practices especially, but also for competition, and it becomes very difficult early in the spring as well. The turf field, and this would also include a relocation and brand-new tennis courts, as you see in the, in the top part of the site there. This would allow us to bring tennis back to the, the senior high school, but both of these features could be used as part of physical education too, which is something that is really important to us. So, the idea would be to develop the site in phases. This would get us started, and we could do so in a way that would be not cost prohibitive to taxpayers. We'd be able essentially to offer this at no additional cost. We'd be using capital reserves, and it's important to point out that capital reserves are to be used specifically for facility enhancement. That's the purpose, the sole purpose of those reserves. So, again, we don't need a decision tonight, but what I, what we, what we do need to know, just so that we can organize ourselves, is if you're going to want another workshop, or if you would just prefer, when it comes time to make the decision, to have open conversation.
Would everyone like?
I'd like another show.
Conversation now, should we need another workshop?
Doug?
I would like another workshop.
One for the workshop? What is another workshop?
What are you looking to hear?
I think as this is evolving with the town, there might be some additional information that's coming, and that's just really what's coming out of my head, because I know the town just put out some information or requests what the citizens want, as far as input. So, I get newsletters from the town, so I can see some of that. So, is there anything else from the town, like if they do a seeker, for example, what else? Traffic study, right? So, what, what other things that might come up through the traffic study that maybe could change maybe how this initial plan is?
Yeah, for the purposes of the, of the seeker, the district will take the lead agency, and then, you know, the town would be an interested party as well, you know, with many other people. But that's, I think if you work it backwards, because your next board meeting is February 25th?
Yes.
Yes.
And I think if you work it backwards from February 25th, if you're looking to put this on a May ballot, you know, that's the timeline, you, it's up to the leaders probably to start to get everything completed. The seeker has, the seeker has timeframes that we have to go through, that we have to meet before a May vote.
We wouldn't necessarily do the traffic study before the next.
No, the traffic studies, now, the traffic study, we wouldn't really start, I think, until we had, we knew we were going for a May vote.
Right. So, you wouldn't have that information?
So, you have to come up with a plan first, and then from whatever plan we evolve, then we would get more feedback as far as the traffic light or any feedback. And we did get feedback prior to our, we had a.
Thought exchange.
Thought exchange, and I think you were, I think you've seen the thought exchanges to what the community wanted, and some, some of their concerns as well.
Yeah, the one thing that does have to be done before the vote is the seeker.
Anyone else?
Maybe we could talk about flying and get something, if you want to, okay.
Any questions?
If we have any questions, if we come up with something, can we contact you?
You can email, yeah, you can make sure that Andy gets his email, Joe's email, and you can send stuff to us.
Sorry, one other question I have, the tax impact per year, what is the time period on that? Is that indefinite? Is that the five-to-seven-year window? Is it one year? We just.
You know, part of it's up to, as far as the aid coming back. Projects like this, depending on, you know, if you were to build a brand-new building, that aid screen comes back over 30 years. If it's, if it's more renovations and field work, the aid screen should come back over 15 years.
So, that is, you know, I realize the recommended option is the zero cost per year, and that's probably preferable to a lot of people, but just for argument's sake, I mean, the $54 per year, $27 per year, the tax, so you say that's, that would be, the impact would be over the course of 15 or 30 years?
I believe so, and I would like to defer to Andy Whitmore.
Yeah.
In my experience.
Okay.
SCD kind of has three timeframes, either you were 15, 25, or 30, depending on what you're doing.
And it was based on $150,000 dollars.
Sorry? Yeah, based on $150,000.
Okay. So, we'll talk about it at our next meeting on the February 25th, and Doug, if you have any questions, we'll email both, as comfortable with that? Okay, great. All right, thank you.
So, we'll be prepared to facilitate a conversation as opposed to a presentation?
Yes. Conversation. Okay.
Thanks for your time.
Okay. Next up, we have our, oh, exciting policy reads. I'd like a motion to move the district policy and regulations to second read. Moved by Nikki, seconded by Diane. Any discussions on the policy?
I just have a question. I know I mentioned the he, she, the they, or their.
Yeah.
Is that something the policy committee talked about?
We did, and we started, we started working on it, and I think right now we've framed it as students, so most of them that we are reading.
So, the first read ones have been changed to that? There's a few, there's several that were missed, just so you're aware.
That actually is a Gen 9, 29.
Oh. Okay.
Perfect. Okay. Thank you.
Motion to, or any discussions on the district's second read? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Any opposed, nay? We will move that to second read.
Sorry?
Okay, all right. We're moving it to second read, and then we're going, Nerlan, did you want to add anything about the, the further discussions on the regulations on 5110R?
Yeah, I think you have some questions and policy around that.
No, no, no. I'm just trying to follow what Jennifer's doing, I'm, I'm with you now.
Okay.
That is not what you first said, so I'm just kind of like not.
I had a question too, I just first said second.
We're moving all of the first reads to second read.
Thank you.
Okay, and then we're going to discuss the biases in a minute.
Thank you.
Okay. James, did you have any discussions about the regulation?
I'm okay.
You're okay?
Thank you.
Doug, are we all set with that? Okay. I think it was clear when you explained it. Yeah. All right, policy bias?
I think you could ask that the PM, Jennifer, is do you know whether we could discuss the table about he, she, and those types of things?
He, she, students, what we were going to use. So, how would be preferred to?
The difficulty in using they and their is grammatical correctness.
Right.
And in some respects, you know, like, for example, it's how we look for the superintendent or his or her designee, it's easy to say superintendent's designee, so in some cases, it's very clean in terms of how you substitute within all those policies, but in other cases it isn't, so we figured it would make sense to have further conversation at this table around how we want to proceed.
Do most of them make sense, like, say, the student, or the, like, I think a lot of them were about students, like the ones that we are currently reading.
I don't know if you want to pull me up and take a look at it?
Yeah, I think in some of the cases, you could substitute student.
I think when we were looking at it, we had like the students or student, and that was working.
So, in, oh, shoot, I just lost my page.
And I think too, we also discussed waiting to see what the School Board Association also came up with, because they're going to be the deciding factor as to what we, what we decide.
Correct, Doug? I'm trying to think of our conversation, our 7:00 AM conversation.
I think we also decided that we might want to hold off until hear what their, their ruling was also.
They're going to be issuing a draft policy on diversity and inclusion overall, and that may have that in there, but, you know, we can always wait with the district guidance. That seems good.
Because we're talking about a pretty deep dive into all our policies when it comes Because we're talking about a pretty deep dive into all our policies when it comes to the pronouns, right?
Correct.
Right.
Yeah. So is everyone okay waiting to see what NISPA comes up with?
Yep.
So, Mary? Okay. All right, then we can move on. And next up is the superintendent's report.
Okay. There were, there were three items, which, excuse me, two items that were submitted as written items for your review and consideration. They were the professional growth fellowship applications and the student discipline referrals report. Are there any comments or questions on either of those written reports?
I really appreciate comparative over three years, because it's in the context of where we're at, so that's very helpful having that grounded that way. Just numbers are numbers, but when I see it that way, I really see where we've had our growth and where our work is.
Any other questions or comments for the good of the order on the written items? Okay. I did want to just give a quick update on the budget development process. Andy and I are going to be doing a workshop at our next meeting, which is a bit more detailed. But as you'll remember, last meeting, we presented an updated, updating as far as the revenue goes. We did receive a little bit more in the way of state aid. Most of that came in the form of building aid. So as you'll remember, that did bring down our gap. However, we are recommending about $250,000 worth of add-ons, which are necessary. They came as proposals at the building level primarily. Most of them are centered around things like projected staffing needs and mandated requirements in the form of training. One of the smaller proposals was a request from student council in support of green initiatives. So that brought the gap up to about $866,000. We presented two options to you, one being a way for us to bridge the gap through measured reductions, another was more of a blended approach, where we looked at utilization of reserves along with reductions, and ultimately, that was the option that you supported. So we will be looking at $466,000 in reductions and $400,000 in reserves in order to bridge the gap. The budget-to-budget increase, as you know, is about 3.8%. Most of that is attributed to wage increases, increases in benefits. We also experienced a spike this year in terms of outside placements. These are both these placements, and many of the students that were placed this year came to us new and already had those placements. But there was about a million-dollar increase this year. We're going to be talking more about it next time, but the allowable tax cap this year is going to be about 3.4%. That's due to growth rate. But nevertheless, we should still be in a position where we would be able to keep the actual tax rate impact below 2%. So we'll be talking more about that and asking you to give us feedback as we go through the process, but the plan is to give a workshop that's a bit more detailed on the 25th. I also just wanted to make you aware of a couple of things that we have going on in the district. We've talked a little bit tonight about the thought exchange as it relates to the development of the Good Shepherd property, but we also initiated an exchange which opened on February 3rd and will close on the 14th this week, which we put out to seniors, where we essentially asked them, you know, what did we do well as far as your experience here, and what are the things that we need to improve as a district? So administration and teachers have been great about helping to encourage students to participate in the exchange. As you know, commenting in the exchange is just one piece of it, but going back in and looking at what other students had to say and rating those comments, that's a big part of the process for us, because you get to see which students are, or, excuse me, which thoughts are rated at the top. So right now, we have about 133 thoughts that were rated more than 2,000 times. So that's thus far, and we're encouraged by that. So we're hoping to get some good feedback there. Our parent survey opened yesterday and will be available through spring break. It will close on the 21st, and those are centered around our parent engagement priorities, but also, if you remember, we revised the survey last year to include the district priorities as well, because DPAC felt like it was important to get feedback on our district priorities along with the parent engagement priorities. So once that closes, then we'll be disaggregating the information, and that will really frame the conversation that we have in our parent forum, which is scheduled for March 5th. And then, just a couple of reminders, school will be closed next week for February recess, the 17th through the 21st, and our next BOE meeting will be on the 25th. That concludes the superintendent's report.
Great, thank you. And let's take a look at some new business. Did everyone get a chance to review the board goals? Any questions or comments? All right. How about the board budget? Any comments or questions? All right, this brings us to our board member reports. And first up is Henrietta Youth Assessment Team?
The asset team. And I did not go in the meeting, so I'll get the notes from, from the town to pass them on.
And Bo, how about the legislative committee?
I was not able to attend, but I will find out what was covered and report back to the board.
Okay. Safety committee, Emery.
With a very short meeting, Ken Nelson said they started checking all the water fixtures for lead again. They completed this building, and when soon, they're going to start with the lower grade and move up. Geraldo talked about the summer feeding program, which will be from July 6th to August 14th. And Bonnie said that the backpack program is ready to go. She has all the bags ordered or has them already, and she talked about the different ways that they will be able to, because there's representatives in on the school that will help pack kids' bags or parents can go there and pick it up. The fire district is building a new fire, well, they're trying to build a new firehouse on the west side of town due to the issues of population, and he used the example of if someone is attacking burger, it should cut response time down by probably four minutes, six to eight minutes to four minutes. Obviously, not official. The sheriff's deputy said they all have the ID access to all the school district buildings now, and Chris said the safety audit helped them come up with a plan in place to keep kids off the roof. So that's a good plan.
Okay.
And then, there is a wellness workshop on April 21st, and the safety forum will be on the 29th of April.
Great, thank you. And legislative breakfast, I know I went and I found it very informative. It was great to actually sit down. We had, I sat down at a table with someone from Adam Bellows. He was representing, and it was very encouraging to hear what their priorities are, his impact with early education, and it was great to hear what they had to say. I wish Andy was here, because someone brought up Imagine Rochester, how they're, it's a former community, and how they're looking at Imagine Rochester, and they're hoping to get people from different areas on the board, because I know Andy always applies to be on this, this board for businesses that come in. So listening to his perspective, they're going to be looking into this. They've only been in office since, he said five weeks, I think he said. So he goes, it's been fast. He said it feels like five years, but they're really hitting the ground running. So it was great. I sat at that table, and I also sat with Phyllis and discussed some things, and then hearing Joe Morelli speak was always, it was great hearing his priorities still to this area and looking at mental health, which was really, really inspiring. I liked it. Any other thoughts, Nerlan?
Whole new format this year, which I think was appreciated by folks, because I think it was getting a little stale, being able to have two sets of tables to go around, so you get a chance to speak with more individuals, get more thoughts, more of a flavor of what's going on in other districts as well. I started the morning because I was a table leader, so I had these two wonderful gentlemen who moved over, because a couple of politicians couldn't be there.
Right.
Weather and stuff, so it was great to be able to have that experience. And then moved to a second table, which is really nice, one chance to have one-on-one versus, I mean, at the end, usually, they would just have all the legislators up there asking questions, I think it was more productive.
And actually giving them the handout that you gave us, that was really good, so they can see what, what is impacting Rush Henrietta. I think that was very, very helpful.
It was a bit like a speed dating format, though with just two stops, circulating around to the different legislators and their representatives. I did appreciate Assemblyman Bronson. There was a little bit of a foible in the scheduling, and so a group of us from RH were waiting for our table to free up, but in the meantime, Assemblyman Bronson saw us and said, Rush Henrietta people here, come with me, let's all go sit down. And so we were able to, most of us there were able to sit with, to sit with Harry for a while and just hear the big picture about what's going on at the state level and upstate versus downstate, the challenges of Medicare and Medicaid, you know, the budget deficit overall, just to kind of get his perspective on things. It was appreciated.
And also, he did, I did introduce myself, and he did stop me and said that he'd like to get together, because there's so many new faces on the board, to hear what we need and what we would, any support we'd like. So he would, he also offered to sit down with us. So I thought it was good. DPAC.
Yeah, we met last week, it was a great night. They always do their parent group liaison reports, what's going on in each of the schools. They did discuss, meet the board candidates nice, the preparation of that, the questions. Organized their nominee committee so they can elect their leadership for next year in May. We had a great workshop with Geraldo. He kind of went through the details of components the students have to have, why we can't have a sharing table. Then he went into the new menu app, if you will, how you can look at the different components of the food items, which is really great for our students that have some medical needs that, you know, parents can really look at that and go over the menu with their kids and go, okay, this is a good, good choice for you. He did talk about the summer meals program. And we talked about the parent survey that opened up on Monday, and we did talk a little bit, recorded out about the equity and civility steering committee and what's going on with that.
Great, thank you. And Nikki, budget advisory council?
We met last night, and Andy was there, and he took us through the voter exit survey from last year, and really kind of hit home where we have so many seniors that come out and support our district. It's amazing to see that, how many of them really voted yes, and really support what we do, even though their kids have gone through, or their grandkids are here, and it was really great to see. Went through some of the comments that we had. It was interesting to see that a lot of the comments were about providing ID when voting, and people were talking a little bit about that, and it was a decision that was made, I think, a couple of years ago about kind of getting away from that. And people were like, kind of talked them down a little bit. They were a little nervous, but I don't think anyone's going around voting in any other district, but anyone can challenge somebody. That is something that people need to realize, if they do see someone who isn't here, they can challenge that vote. We also talked about the budget proposals, the proposals that were brought forth and the cuts that were proposed, and he went through everything to balance the budget by all cuts, and how we decided that we would do some cuts and some with the reserves. And we, he also went through the tax cap update and all that formulation, and confused everybody, I think. And we also went through the great presentation about Good Shepherd, and there were some great questions about that, and, you know, the community members were really glad to see there was an option that doesn't, doesn't affect their tax dollars, so.
Very good. All right, thank you. And Henrietta Youth Development Advisory Committee?
I wasn't able to attend the meeting. I was out of town on the cross.
No problem.
I'll share the minutes when they're shared.
Okay. And the District Wellness Council?
Another short meeting, it's a week this week. I guess apparently, the first week of March is National Breakfast Week, who knew? Geraldo said there are special plans or special treats for, I think, students that wish to join with the breakfast. Nice. Ken said, of course, he said it in both things, that they're disinfecting nonstop. They actually have a hole that sprays everything, keep an eye, just like I said, it's like saturating all the desks and tables and counters and doors and all of that. And the agent that they use not only kills the flu, but kills the coronavirus. And the flu, Jill said, has, is still at a peak. It's hitting mostly five to 17-year-olds, and it appears to be milder than the past flu that we've had, but it's hitting more people, so she said just tell everyone, everyone from this bathroom, right back that room, gone. And then the coronavirus, she just got out of a meeting today with the CDC and the Health Department. They actually have a name for the coronavirus now, which is COVID-19, and it's a combination of SARS and something with bats. And then she said, right now, there's about 40,000 cases in the world, and then she gave us some other details, but she went back to that disinfecting, that the district's continuing to monitor. Right now, there's no one, there's no one in New York that has it at all, but here they're monitoring, they're disinfecting. She gave all the nurses exactly what they need to do if someone presents with the symptoms, and it is, we're just simply doing three days after exposure.
Thank you. All right, this brings us to our board recap.
Great meeting, everyone, and thank you to Pat and Nerlan for bringing the view of our team to present to the board. It's always exciting to hear our steps we're taking towards equity and inclusion. Upcoming events, spring break is the 17th to 21st, and our next board meeting is the 25th. February break, sorry. I jumped to spring.
There was a question about the tax impact that we're going to ask Andy about with the projects, so that's coming back.
Following it, yeah.
And then we have our budget workshop.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. Andy, all right. This concludes this meeting. I'd like a motion to adjourn the meeting. Moved by James, seconded by May. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Good evening. Have a good night, everyone.